Good evening, Chair. Calls to order zoning Board of Appeals case for number 5960, Mr. John Whitney Allen. Gentlemen, Mr. Young, Mr. Allen. As in the past, you'll each have 15 minutes to present, and you may want to reserve some time at the end for any rebuttal. And, Mr. Allen, whenever you're ready, we'd like to start with you, sir.
Okay. I came to challenge some of the statements that were made at the last hearing about some of the people that appeared to testify. I believe the allegations were false. I'd like to start with the resident of 3919 Love Court. He said, "My car parked on the court was a zoning violation." Well, it just isn't, and it's not even a parking violation. It has insurance and tags, and it's not illegal to park it there. He also stated that his property was damaged by the mail truck that delivers mail there. I talked to the mail person, and...
Objection to anything that any other person said that's not in evidence.
I know it's hearsay, but when she delivers mail to my house, and the parcel is too big to fit in the mailbox, she gets out of the mail truck and walks it up and leaves it at the house. So she's not a lazy person. If she couldn't access his mailbox, she would get out of the mail truck and put his mail in his box. And I couldn't see any damage to his property from the mail truck driving up to deliver his mail. Then there's the lady at 3907. She said, "I spilled diesel fuel," which I didn't do. There was an issue about some metal shavings that got left on the roadway, which I cleaned up after I had been working on my truck there. She also stated that "I'm a hazard when I drive around through the development. Children and pets are in danger," and that's not true either. I've lived there since 1998, and there's never been any incident, any danger to anyone in the community from the way I drive my truck through the development. I have a good work history, and I have a good safety record. Then there's the residents of 3911. They're claiming that I bring trailers home regularly, which I don't. I brought a trailer there one time to deliver some fence panels that I had gone to the Home Depot to purchase. I brought them home in a 20-foot container. There were eight of them, and I offloaded them myself and stacked them by the side of the house. And then, when I was able to, I installed them around the fence. Prior to doing that, I got a fence permit, which is on five. And then I put the fence panels up there to prevent my neighbors from looking in my backyard and taking shots at my pets, which are back there with some kind of a weapon, which I took one of my cats to the vet, and one of them had been shot with a pellet gun. And I believe it was those people at 3911 were responsible for that. They're the kind of people that would do something like that. And they've been very hostile ever since I've lived there. I was even assaulted by the resident that lives at 3911. And when he was here last time, he testified. First, he said that he didn't assault me, then he said that he did. So what? So his attitude is, "I just do what I want," and that's not true. I've been living there since 1998, and I do my best to get along with everybody. I do drive a truck. I do have the truck parked there. It's necessary for me to park my truck there to get back and forth to work. I'm just there to earn a living. And I've kept the mortgage current, and all the bills are current. I have suffered through some downtime, but I've managed to bring my mortgage current, and that's why I parked the truck there, and that's what I'm doing there. And I'm not there to cause any trouble, and I've done everything I can to avoid confrontation with the residents at 3911. There was a confrontation up at the food line one day, and the aftermath of that, I went up to him, and I spoke to him, and I said to him, "I don't like you, you don't like me. You stay away from me, I'll stay away from you." And he said, "Is that how you want it?" And I said, "Yeah." And ever since then, there's been a fragile peace in the court, and I'm asking that the council, the Hartford County Department of Planning and Zoning, would grant the variance that I've applied for and that I paid the fees for so that peace can be, some peace can be maintained down there, and there's no confrontations, and there's no kind of physical confrontations, which I'm determined to avoid. From here on out, you know, I'm not going to be drawn into any kind of physical confrontation because of the behavior of the residents at 3911 Love Court.
Anything else, Mr. Allen?
No.
You have 10 minutes and 58 seconds left in your time if you do want to address anything. Mr. Young?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. I'll again renew my objection to anything that was new and not contained in the record, as I believe most of that was. We're here for a very limited purpose, and that is the determination as to whether or not Mr. Allen's R2 lot should be permitted through a variance to be allowed to operate as a B3 use of storing commercial vehicles. Uniqueness is required for a variance to be granted, and Mr. Allen has given no indication that there is any uniqueness to his property. In fact, on page 20 of the transcript, I asked Mr. Allen, "Is your house similar to the other houses that are shown on there," meaning the staff reports exhibit showing the aerial image of the neighborhood? Mr. Allen's response was, basically, "Yeah. There's nothing that's unique about this property. There's nothing in the record that's unique. The examiner was correct in his determination. There's no mention of uniqueness anywhere in the record. No basis for this board to overturn the hearing examiner, and accordingly, he must be upheld." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. You have 14 minutes left if needed. Mr. Allen, anything else you'd like to add, sir, within this record?
Other commercial vehicles parked in the development. If you drive through there, you'll see that there are other commercial vehicles parked in the Crestwood Acres development, not just mine. So I think that the Department of Planning and Zoning should enforce all the zoning laws, not just some.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Young, anything else?
No, thank you.
Counsel, any questions?
Good afternoon, gentlemen. What type of vehicle are you driving, sir?
I drive a tractor-trailer.
Yes, sir.
Just a tractor.
Just a tractor.
I just park the truck in the driveway. On some occasions, I brought a trailer home for the purpose of delivering, like I said, fence panels or moving some furniture or something like that.
And do you have any other means of transportation?
Yes.
So you have, you have a commercial vehicle?
I have a personal vehicle, yes.
Okay. And so, do we know where you can park the vehicle? Is there, is there a designated spot? I think you said B2, B3, that he can park the vehicle?
It's principally permitted use in the B3 zone.
In the B3 zone?
Councilmember Johnson, the record reflects that it's a Kennelworth cab, and that he also has a cargo van and a sedan automobile that are at the property. It's three vehicles, and the transcript reflects that two of them can be kept in the driveway, but the third one has to be parked on the court.
So, Mr. Young, is there, what's the, what's the reason why you want that commercial vehicle parked there if you have a personal vehicle to transport you to wherever is necessary to park the vehicle?
Well, I have to commute to the Port of Baltimore every day.
Yes, sir.
At home, and sometimes that commute can be lengthy, depending on if I get up early enough. If I leave my house at 5:00 a.m., I can make it to the Port of Baltimore by 6:00. And they open at 6:30. So that's my goal, is to get down there early enough. And then, getting in and out of the Port of Baltimore is very challenging. There's, you have to have certain, you have to be registered with the port, you have to have a transponder unit, a tag, and all that has to be kept updated. And then, the traffic on I-95, at 5:00 a.m., you know, coming from Hartford County, by 7:30, by 7:30, it's a parking lot. So getting there early is important in order to, and then sometimes, in the evening coming home, it can be a two-hour commute. So having to park my truck somewhere and commute, that would add more time to that commute, and I really have a limited hours of service that I'm limited to. And so, it's a brutal job.
Right.
And it's, it's tough. It's tough enough as it is, and then with the way my neighbors are, it makes life really difficult just because of their attitude. And I know they hate me. I know they just do. And I don't really understand why, but they've never exhibited any kind of friendship or any kind of, they've never reached out. I even tried to approach the residents of 3911 to mediate some of these disputes, and they were non-responsive. And they've been hostile ever since I've lived there. I think they're like, they have a redneck mentality, and they look at me, "He's a hippie truck driver," and they just hate me. That's the only, they hate me for that reason alone. And I think it's really unfair. Their whole attitude and behavior over the years has been really difficult for me to deal with. I've lived there since 1998, and there's a lot of conflict and animosity. It's just, it never ends. Well, I've tried, I've done everything I can do to avoid any contact with them and the woman at 3907 now.
Yes, sir. And I understand there's, there's a neighborhood dispute issue here going on, but as far as the vehicle's concerned, so it's more of a convenience issue for you rather than anything else, correct?
Well, I would say half and half. I'd say convenience, necessity. It's a little bit of both, but...
Okay.
If I may, Councilmember Johnson, yes. Transcript on pages 14 and 15, Mr. Allen testified that he works 12 to 16-hour shifts, six days a week. He comes home for eight-to-10-hour breaks, as is mandatory in his profession, and then he's right back out again. He said that he needs to have the truck on site to be able to accommodate that short schedule, and that he performs maintenance in the driveway as well, as I believe he reiterated in some of his comments tonight that echoed what his testimony was at the hearing. There have been some disputes in the neighborhood about that. This was brought up as a violation case, and it is a difficult industry. No arguments as to that. However, it's the same for all truck drivers, and there's nothing unique about this property or Mr. Johnson's use. I'm sorry, Mr. Allen's use.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else? Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. This will be, this will be considered at a future meeting. Thank you. This will conclude the zoning appeal case for 5960, and we'll take a recess until 7:30. Good evening, Chair. Calls to order Legislative Session Day 22-021. I would ask you to please join us in standing for the pledge, followed by this evening's opening prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening asking for your blessings and your guidance as we conduct tonight's council meeting. We continue to pray for our local and national leaders. We ask that you be present in them and guide them each and every day. Lord, we ask that you watch over our students, educators, and parents as they return to school today. We hope that they are blessed with a healthy and productive start to the school year. As always, we ask you to be present with a watchful eye over our men and women in uniform, law enforcement, and fire and EMS partners as they continue to keep our county safe. We thank you for your loving grace. All these things we ask in your most holy name, Lord. Amen. Agenda item number four, five, and six. We have nothing this evening. Agenda item number seven, approval of minutes. Legislative Day 22-020, June 21, 2022. Are there any corrections to the minutes? I'm going to stand approved. Eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions. Mr. President, or Mr. Vice President, please read Resolutions 020-22 and 21-22 into the record, please.
Resolution number 020-22, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution providing for the adoption of the Master Water and Sewer Plan Fall 2022 update, a copy of which is attached hereto and for submission of the plan to the Maryland Department of Environment for its approval and implementation pursuant to Title IX of the Environmental Code, Article of the Maryland Annotated Code. Public hearing to be held on Tuesday, October 4th, at 6:00 p.m. Resolution number 21-22, introduced by Council President Patrick Vincenti. A resolution pursuant to subsection 11-801 of the Correctional Services Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland approving the imposition and collection of boarding fees for inmates that are sentenced to the Hartford County Detention Center for non-consecutive periods of 48 hours or less per week, imperrenz weekend inmates. Public hearing?
Oh, I was just going to point that as to whether, that's actually section, not subsection.
I'm sorry. Section. Okay. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, October 4th, at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. Agenda item number nine, introduction of bills. Mr. Wagner, please read Bills 22-019 through 22-021 into the record for introduction.
Bill number 22-019, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. An emergency act to, again, renew a temporary moratorium on the application of certain provisions of the Hartford County zoning code related to setbacks, parking requirements, temporary uses, signs, outdoor storage, and display and seating capacity with regard to uses that include nightclubs, bars, breweries, and restaurants. By the council, September 6, 2022. Introduced, read first time, ordered posted, and public hearing scheduled on October the 4th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. Bill number 22-20, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. An act to repeal and reenact with amendments. Section 28-1 Volunteer Firefighter Length of Service Award Program. Subsection B in Section 28-2 Service Benefits. Subsection A, Subsection B, and Subsection C of Article I. Pensions of Chapter 28 of the Hartford County Code as amended to change the age of eligibility to receive benefits and to adjust the benefit amount in generally relating to fire, ambulance, and rescue organizations. By the council, September 6, 2022. Introduced, read first time, ordered posted, and public hearing scheduled on October 4th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. Bill number 22-021, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive and Councilmember Schroes. An act to determine which residential properties in close proximity to a county-owned refuse disposal system are entitled to a real property tax credit for the tax year beginning on July 1, 2023, all in accordance with Bill numbers 92-89 and 10-02. By the council, September 6, 2022. Introduced, read first time, ordered posted, and public hearing scheduled on October the 4th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Agenda items 10, 11, 12, and 13, we have no business tonight. Agenda item number 14, new business executive appointment. Extension of acting director of procurement. Mr. Wagner, may I have a motion, please?
I would move for the appointment of Stephanie Whalen as acting director of procurement.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bueller. It's been moved in a second to approve the appointment of Ms. Whalen as acting director. Any comments, councilmember? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Schroes?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye. Being seven votes in affirmative and none in a negative, the appointment of Stephanie Whalen as acting director of procurement for an additional four months, as provided in the Charter, Section 314, temporary administrative appointments, is hereby approved. If I may, I'd like to skip 15 and go to business from councilmembers. 16, Mr. Johnson?
Council President, I just, I would just like to say, I'm happy to see everybody back, healthy and safe after the summer, and I look forward to moving on and having a great, productive session, this upcoming session. So with that said, I'll yield my time back.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. Everyone, welcome back. Hope you had a safe summer and have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Mr. Jan Giordano?
Boy, that was quick. So, good evening, everybody. Just wanted to congratulate Jesse Baines, retiring from the position as town administrator. We had the honor of presenting him with a proclamation for his service, community service for all the years. So I want to congratulate also all the kids. Made it back to school, and I wish them the best of luck, the teachers, staff, parents. So it was a pretty, it was also a pretty busy summer. There was a couple of grand openings, Phoenix Beach Therapy, Tommy on Main, and I'm glad that our kids are back at school without masks, not like PG County. So, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. Mr. Schroes?
Thank you, Council President. It's great to see everyone. Welcome back, and I hope everyone had a great summer. Of course, I wish all the students and teachers the very best in their year to come. I got to take my daughter Maddie to school. It was a little rainy for the bus, so she's in seventh grade already. It's hard to believe. So I wish her and everyone a very great 2022, '23 school year. You might notice that we're all wearing ribbons, and since nobody said it, I'm going to tell everyone what this is all about. It's National Recovery Month, so awareness and awareness of that and the addiction that our community and all across the world is facing, but I do think we're doing great things here in Hartford County to increase awareness and do the best we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. I mean, Mr. Schroes, Mr. Wagner.
I believe we are doing great things in Hartford County when it comes to addictions and counseling and the things that we have to do to keep our youth safe as we can. And on that note, while we were on break, we did have an official grand opening of the clubhouse in Aberdeen, which is a part of Ashley, and it's, it's an effort between the county and Ashley and the Health Department to get help for youth that need some mentoring and whatever they may need. So, you know, as you mentioned, the resources, you know, Mr. Schroes, don't be ashamed or don't be afraid to reach out and find those resources, because we do have the resources in Hartford County. They're within your reach, and as we heard, and we've been hearing in the news, you know, COVID really did a number on our youth and on the school-aged children and set them back quite a ways. So, you know, reach out to the agencies as you need it, and they're there to help you. It's good to be back, and we look forward to finishing up this session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Mr. Bueller?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I, too, would like to wish everybody back. It's good to see you. I mean, everybody's back safe and sound, and I hope the summer went well. And as far as the students and educators and parents, I will pray for them for a prosperous and productive school year, because the last couple of have been very difficult, some of what was mentioned already. So that's all I have, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bueller. And I, too, want to welcome everyone back to school, especially my grandson Jake. He's starting his fifth grade at Darlington Elementary, and wish him all the best, as well as all the students in the county, educators, staff, volunteers, the entire group. We may have been, I guess, on break, but we really weren't. Each one of us worked diligently throughout the past two months with meetings with different constituents and groups, Aberdeen Proving Ground, Sheriff's Office. And also, we have had two prior meetings for our health officer search. Tomorrow, we will host our third. We will more than likely go into closed session for most of that, because we will be reviewing our candidates that have filed for that position. We have 36 applicants, I can say that. So looking forward to that tomorrow. And I want to remind everyone that this Sunday is 9/11, and make sure that you keep everyone in your thoughts and prayers throughout the process. And with that, we'll go to agenda item 17. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do, Mr. President. We have four this evening.
And before I, before we get started, I just want to remind everyone that we have a three-minute limit, and we are going to require not only your signing in with name and address, but orally at the mic as well. I know we relaxed it for a while, but we're just filing our council open meetings rules and procedures. So we will require that. Again, if you want to speak, you will have to give your name and address. Call your first speaker.
John Malamo, followed by Kate McDonald.
Good evening, sir.
Sir, good evening to you and your colleagues. John Malamo, 2402 Eagleview Drive. Hopefully, you were able to relax on your recess and find productive activities to pursue. It's been an interesting summer, particularly the past few months. I spent my time in pursuit of trivial activities. Ms. Catherine Ann spent her time scolding me for my silliness and my mischief. She's taken that on as a full-time job, and she's pretty proficient at it. One set scolding is my comments to the county council. She asked if I could soften my criticism and find a way to allow you to show your better selves. To that end, I make this offer to you. I will donate $1,000 to the charity of choice, in the name of whichever one of you can conclusively prove by the end of the 20 September 2022 council meeting that the Hartford County Airport can operate a general aviation airport as a permitted use at its present location and comply with all of Part 1 of the Present Zoning Code, the Hearing Examiner's Conditions in Zoning Case 5814, and all of the FAA and MAA requirements for a general aviation airport. I will donate another $500, under the same conditions, to which whenever ever one of you can identify any location in Hartford County that will meet all of Part 1 of the Present Zoning Code, the Hearing Examiner's Conditions in Zoning Case 5814, and all of the FAA and MAA requirements for a general aviation airport. I sent you each a copy of the MAA-approved airport layout plan, the Zoning Board of Appeals Site Plan versus Zoning Case 5814, and the exhibit labeled "Operations Exhibit," and a legal interpretation of operations and a traffic pattern. Those documents illustrate the FAA and MAA requirements for a general aviation airport, the Hartford County zoning requirements for a general aviation airport, and describe operation and the traffic pattern. Please do let me know if there's any other document you need. Thank you. Good night.
Good night, sir. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Kate McDonald, 2100 Park Beach Drive, Aberdeen, Maryland. Enterprise zones are defined as an impoverished area in which incentives such as tax concessions are offered to encourage business investment, jobs, and revitalization to the area. How they work is that a state or local government body identifies an area either blighted or in distress, and they work to incentivize businesses and varying industries to come to that area with opportunities such as jobs, services, restaurants, shopping, et cetera. Those municipalities, in turn, are supposed to take those added tax revenue and sales revenue to invest and reinvest those dollars into the area effective in the way of supportive infrastructure, parks, open spaces, transit, service-oriented businesses, et cetera. This collective effort is what's, what is supposed to help attract even more desirable businesses and economic growth to revitalize that area and help increase or preserve property values. That's how it's supposed to work. Now, according to the Hartford County playbook, Hartford County identified the areas it wanted to protect and preserve, and located the enterprise zone in the lower incomes of Hartford County, Abingdon, Aberdeen, Edgewood, Harvard, Havanna Grace. The EZ was not created in Hartford County to create, was not created to revitalize South Hartford County. It was created to keep unwanted developments, such as large freight distribution centers, out of the Bel Air, Foston, and Churchville areas. Since its creation, any desirable business development, such as restaurants, shopping, arts centers, new recreational centers, parks, have been steered north of I-95, and any undesirable development, such as large freight distribution centers, have been steered to the lower parts of Hartford County. In over 10 years that I've been here, I've seen almost no reinvestment into the area that would attract businesses that would actually serve the purpose of an enterprise zone. No new infrastructure, no new parks, no new sidewalks, and Route 40 is still the same rundown highway with dilapidated buildings, old houses falling down, sketchy motels, and thousands and thousands of diesel trucks, destroying the roads and polluting our air. The Route 40 corridor has been so neglected by you guys, Hartford County, that when you drive through some of it, you think it's still 1965, and that is a sad situation. drive through some of it, you think it's still 1965, and that is a sad situation. It needs new leadership and a different path forward. So get with it and do the right thing for all the residents of Harford County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
William Martino, followed by Paul Falachi.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Bill Martino, 1207 Teeford Road. Started coming to the county council a little over a year ago, wanted to sum up my experiences. I watched as liberty-minded citizens protested the tyrannical views of the Harford County Health Department, more specifically Dr. Bashai, desiring to force vaccinations on us. Supporters of Bashai told us how selfish we were for not complying with these potential mandates. Well, the results are in, and the fully vaccinated are testing positive for COVID at a higher rate than the unvaccinated and are equally transmissible. The vax is a failure. However, it was successful in killing our healthiest citizens as huge increases in deaths of student athletes, military personnel, and younger age groups spiceth in 2021. So kudos to the council for their action to remove Bashai. However, as head of the Health Department of this county, I don't think you adequately do your homework. I sat here and watched as Colin Ward, chief operating officer of the Upper Chesapeake, lied to this council that all patients coming into the hospital were, our code for COVID were unvaccinated. At the time he said that, the data was saying that 60% of hospitalized patients were vaccinated. I guess there must be a magic bubble around Harford County that protected the vax, but only in Northeast Maryland. He was lying to you, gentlemen, about this and other issues, and you never challenged him. I witnessed as the emergency management system tell the council that they are overwhelmed with emergency calls. Bel Air Hospital was on code red every day during the pandemic. As we are retiring Harford Memorial Hospital. Why? We need a second hospital in this county. I'm sure Upper Chesapeake will be happy to come here again and lie to you that we don't need the second hospital. Will you be prepared for it? I also watched as this council allowed overdevelopment of the Perryman area that will ruin that community. However, I would like to finish on a positive note. Last month, the Board of Education was proposing new procedures to limit parents' ability to speak to them. They went from masking us to try to muscling us. This issue hasn't been settled yet, but it is leaning towards free speech. I do want to thank the council for never silencing or limiting the public's ability to address their representatives. I remember being here one night as 90 citizens registered to speak over the firing of Dr. Bashai, and you patiently listened to every single one of them. You refused to even think about silencing us like the Board of Education is proposing to do. So thank you for allowing the public to speak their mind. Good night.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Paul Falachi, 320 Marina Avenue in Perryman, Maryland. I was going to, I'm going to talk about enterprise zones also this evening. Harford County's enterprise zones in Aberdeen, Haberdigrease, and Edgewood-Joppa are designated to, facts from the code, encourage creation of well-paying jobs, ensure retention and spur expansion of resident businesses, promote development and occupancy of vacant, underutilized land and buildings. Enterprise zone job creation qualification for tax breaks. For businesses of more than 11 people, you have to create five jobs that work at least 35 hours per week at $1,875 an hour. Minimum wage in Maryland is $1,250, so $1,875 per hour, but only half of those hours need to be in the new enterprise zone area itself. In November of 2017, the county council voted to add three parcels of land in Perryman to the enterprise zone for the Aberdeen-Haberdigrease area. Two parcels, 14 acres on Chelsea Road and 28 acres on Perryman Road. And I just wanted to end with a question. I was wondering for the councilmen from District F, if, did you ask anyone from Perryman before you voted for the addition of this enterprise zones besides the property owners?
Mr. Falachi, he's not going to respond back to you tonight.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
The Honorable Speakers, Mr. President.
If no one else signed up, this meeting will be adjourned. Thank you.